Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening, Wednesday, February 9, 2022, meeting of the Westminster Select Board. The 6:31 PM, I will now pull the meetings aboard. Everyone online, everyone online, can they hear me? That's present. Got folks there.
People should be able to hear you.
Okay. Adjustments to the agenda.
Yes, we can hear you.
I have nothing to add.
Okay. Acceptance of the minutes, the January 26, 2021.
I'm moved that we approved the minutes as rich.
Second.
Motion to approve, minutes has been moved and seconded. Any discussions? Say none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Minutes are adopted. Thank you. Now entertain communication and public comments. Yes, Jim Matt.
I have a couple of things, thank you. One is, in reference to the last week's meeting, I watched the other day. The schedules and things have changed a lot. The Institute is not closed. A number of things are still going on there. Nowhere near where it used to be. We're trying to open up more and get more people in. Things have changed a lot, as you may have noticed. But I just want to be sure that as we change that and as, right now, for example, we still call for people who aren't vaccinated to please wear masks and optional for others. When the CDC guidelines change, we'll change. We're just going by that. So that's that thing. The other is, it pains me to be telling you tonight that we got hit with another curveball by the state elevator review board on our project to put a new elevator in. So we're sitting here with half the money in hand and half of the finance and where, you know, it'll be another month or so. Our architects were working on the Benji two addicts yesterday. We think they're pretty unreasonable, but it's the world of obtaining permits. It's not always fun. So it's the project isn't, it's slowed down again. That's the second time. But we will, we will get that nailed down eventually. I wish. Sometimes when people don't tell you exactly what they want to say yes to, they just tell you what they're gonna say no to. It leaves your kind of struggling. So that's where we are. If anyone had questions on that, we'd have to entertain them. Otherwise, that's it until you get to your meeting venue discussion later on. I had some stuff on that.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Jim. Any questions and comments from folks online or here for Jim on the Institute? Members of the committee? Okay. Thank you so much, Jim. Okay, moving on to unfinished business. Hartley Hill Road reclaim deed to legal opinion.
In your packet, you have an email from Larry Slayson going over some of his concerns. And Fletcher responded this afternoon to a review Larry's memo. And as always, he's raised a couple of great excellent points. I think we should get together with him and when he gets back from Florida and go over the situation. I'm thinking he might be able to get around the dedication and acceptance issue by adding some language to the deed. This issue of the underlying laying out of Hartley Hill Road in the 1800s will still need further research. So at this point, it's been recommended by legal counsel to put this on hold until at least he gets back and the two parties have a chance to discuss what's in the best interest for the town of Westminster.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Letters and the records, or any commentary or input, observations anyone wants to make, online or here? Okay. Same none, thank you very much. Moving on to budget separation, highway town costs to update.
It's pretty much on hold right this second because we are in a little bit of a flex. But I gave you, you know, just a mockup that I gave you before. It's just semi what it would look like. It's not complete by any means, but it's at least what it would entail as being its own expenditure and revenue.
Is this the same bit Chip provided? Like a handful of meetings ago or something different?
No, no. This is something that I did. So no, and they really haven't gotten to that point yet, but he's, I guess he's.
Well. Was it a handful of meetings ago, he had done a mockup of
That's correct.
With our old books, like what it would look like. So it seems like we've kind of paid to do this all the way to somebody. No, or am I wrong?
No.
Do the cost to. Well, that's what's going on. I mean, he's, someone's done it.
I don't think he spent a lot of time. Yeah, I think he just
Right.
Did what I did, kind of separated quickly and but I think a lot more.
Get his input and make sure it's correct.
Yeah, I think a lot more detail needs to be.
So this is not her, this is you.
That's me, that's correct. That was just me going through line item by line item and then just pulling the highway items out of it. Just to make sure that we're still.
Yes.
So the cost would be like accounting cost or renumbering that we're talking about?
That's incorrect.
Right.
The reconfiguration of the two.
Yeah, break the number system.
Revenue and expenditure.
Which should be a lot more of like hurling it out with the hands of Chip and make sure Chip agrees with it.
Yeah, so the cost would have to be minimal, I would think.
I would think so too.
I can always do it myself. We're talking about changing one number in the prefix to separate it from the other part. It shouldn't be rock sides. Rock and hill has already got a, got an outline of.
It's the, the height part is what she's alleged. I gotta correct. You gotta have the revenue match that.
Correct.
That's where they're going.
Correct. So you've got, all you've got to do is create revenue lines. And they would be for any grant projects to separate. You know, any, like, when we get money for garbage coming in for power accident, you have a run in for that. And they separate it all right off, so it's pretty transparent.
It will be, but she did bring a point, like the revenue comes in and it could be broken down into several categories. It doesn't just go to your highway department. If there's administrative costs involved, it would go back to his department, for example, to do it. So I think we're all on the same page. I think what she was nervous was that Chip break it all down to know exactly, okay, this is the code. So when the deal comes in.
And just a note that I had brought up to you before in November. Chad is, is asking that this not happen until after it starts July 1st for the new fiscal year.
We're already, we're already about to pull anyways. Yes, Jim Street.
So at the last meeting, we were gonna get a note from Nimarik to separate it. Did Nimarik come through and give us a quote?
Not yet.
That's a little weird. Thank you. Jim. Any other further commentary on this matter? Focus online. Okay, thank you very much. Same none, moving on to scheduled deficiencies and treasury update. Excuse me, treasurer update.
I printed everything off again, so you'll have it. Please bring this one to the next meeting. We do have an update from Paul. He's coming home on the 16th of this month. So hopefully by the next select board meeting, we will have at least a few more areas of discussion that we can clarify and show how we're going to improve and et cetera. But I did print it all off again for you, put it in your packet, so you have it to go over. Please, instead of me keep printing off all of that, if you could bring them next meeting, that'd be awesome.
Can you point out, use a little bit, point out the reason which ones they are?
So the ones that are highlighted on January 7th of the actual ones that we've, we finished. Those are the newest ones. He gave us a draft of deficiencies that were brought up. And some of them have been addressed in comment, in commentary. So it's, it's all of them. I mean, we need to go through each board or what. That's correct. So if you bring those back after Paul and I have had chances to sit down and discuss them, we'll have something for you next meeting.
Commentary, input? Folks online, then public? Members of board?
I read this last time. So the town does not have a fraud policy in place. I thought we did, but when they, when we have a fee, they're gonna come in with an example of what other.
We're gonna go to VLCT and use their model. And that was one of the things that I'm gonna be working on before Paul gets here is to have him look at models. He can look at it and say, yep, that, that seems to fit the bill.
And Onserman wanted, it's very critical to have Chad's input, will he have any availability for us?
Yes.
Okay.
He has already mentioned that, you know, once we get Paul back home, that he is willing to, to come to a meeting via Zoom.
Terrific. Okay. Any other comments? Input? Thank you very much. Moving on. Next matter, 7/29/2021, C1, update.
We were given a new rate changes for our projects. It's actually dated 2021, but we got it on February 1st, 2022. So I gave you just the ups and downs of what people change to. Overall, it's not gonna make a ton of difference, but it will make a little difference on the positive for us. Also, in your packet, it's just an update of Project One Ridge Line, which has been obligated to the state of Vermont from FEMA. State has promised to cut checks and all that on the beginning of February, which we are in. So I'm gonna keep after them on that. The South has made it through the stringent part of the guidelines through FEMA and is now in the preservation conservation area where it should be definitely obligated by mid-February. That boosty takes about a week, week and a half. Project number three, the West, has just, was finished actually Wednesday and she tied it all together today and has got that started through the process. So we're, we're doing well. We've gotten some serious attention from her. She's doing a very good job for us. The Hyt Road has been scheduled for the virtual site. It was already done. We actually didn't even have to attend. It has been approved for commencement. I got that today so we can put it out to bid so that we know that we're talking about the costs. The hydraulics study came back with a 60-inch culvert. I don't wanna speak for you, but are we gonna call Scott Jensen and talk about a squash culvert? Isn't that be beneficial? Or are you all set with a five footer?
We can make it work. We have to make a decision. If you get a squash culvert, it's gonna have to be steel. If you go with a rubber culvert, it can be plastic.
Big difference in price.
Big difference in price, big difference in longevity.
Availability.
Availability also. Yeah, I guess. You gave us the option of steel or plastic, right?
Yes, I did.
So if you go with squash, you just go orange.
Steel, okay. You're gonna slide it into the one that is.
No, no, no.
You'll fill the one below that hole with cement and put it above it. The one that's here now is way too deep. They raised that road like 12 feet over the top of the original culvert. Well, that culvert has failed. They slid, they slid a steel culvert inside a cement culvert to add life to it. And then years passed, they dumped it on up like current hat and held all the material down there and build up holes for a corner. And now that culvert's failed, it doesn't take the water. There's a five-foot culvert under the interstate dumping into a 24-inch culvert underneath that road. So it's just, you're asking too much. It doesn't take much for it to fail. Bag full of leaves and you're done.
You're gonna dig the road up?
Oh yeah, you're gonna have to dig the road up, but you're gonna, you're, instead of digging the road 20 feet deep to put that culvert in, you're gonna fill the existing culvert, that void, with either flowable filler cement. Then you're gonna fill up and put a new culvert in above it where it actually belongs so that that hole isn't so deep. There's no reason for it. It'll be a lot cheaper. We won't be digging this huge hole for no real reason. And.
And the outlet drops off or it sits at an angle so the water doesn't?
Well, you're gonna stone the outlet, so it's gonna drop off some, yeah. It does now.
Right.
It does now, so it's, right. So you're just gonna stone the outlet however so that it can flow out or whatever. But you're good, it's gonna be better if you're thinking about erosion like that. You've got a bigger culvert, so the flow going through it 99% of the time is gonna be a lot less. It's gonna be able to just filter out. Where now it's a smaller culvert and you're asking, wait, now shoot now. So environmentally speaking, bigger is gonna be a lot better. Lot less erosion and that kind of thing.
Also, raising it up is going to, the length will be much shorter.
I was just thinking, that much, it's a drop off.
Exactly.
It is, that water gets running there, you're gonna start watching the bank more coming back out. If that's what you're doing, you're putting stones in.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we're talking about.
And on Tuesday, we did a little bit of estimating and we are going to be over the 1 million mark in damage. Be 1.1 million right now.
Remember what all the oil is gonna be getting? What do they call the oil? It's a gold one too.
I thought you weren't gonna talk today.
It's a rock one.
Well, thank you very much for this synopsis. Any input from the public, folks online? Yes, Chief.
Russ, on the change for the fire truck, do we do join with the original amount? Because we of course have to submit to you for the 29th form. Or do we go with this change now? It's peanuts, but.
You are a contracted service. You can, you can charge the rates that you typically charge. If you don't have them published, then you'll go with the new rates.
Right. The Pemarik changes.
Yes.
And they don't break down rescue or tower or fire truck? They just say fire truck?
There is, there is a couple areas, you and I will.
Discuss that, yeah. Okay, great, thank you.
I'd change. Yes, with, the Hemwood Hill, that, that job's all done. Didn't come in.
The Hemwood Hill is done and it's the next one that we're going to press for her to complete because it's, it is considered a large project because of the volume of money that's invested in it. It's over $132,200. It becomes a large project. It has a little bit more steps to go through than it did at below that. So we're gonna start that process now. That will be the next project she does. But yes, we got the road jump done and it has been built and paid for it. So we're, again, putting it into FEMA's hands to.
So and now that 1.1 million, but we're all done, all except for this one.
I estimated what it would cost at the school-street Hyt Road intersection. And that's what.
That's the last one from the storm.
That's correct.
Any other comments, board members? Public, people online?
Quick question from Mr. Chair.
Yes. Go ahead.
Nate Stotter, thank you for identifying me. I, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe in August or September, I don't remember when. I think the town manager and the board had mentioned that there is going to be the possibility of residents to receive assistance who experienced damage from this storm, personal property damage. Is there any information on where that's at in this?
They, they have let us know that it's, it's still pending, but it's not looking positive, unfortunately, for residents to chip into an assistance program.
Is that FEMA or was it NRCS? Is that the NRCS program?
That was FEMA.
That was FEMA.
Yes. They typically tie it to the storm event and they, it's not, it's not been confirmed, but it's not looking very positive.
Will they provide some type of written clarification on that at all at some point?
I'm sure they will. We're in the early stages of them declaring payment, et cetera. So I'm assuming it's, it's based on what they've, like, what they've been reported to. So I'm, again, I haven't got the confirmation yet.
Okay. What they're going to do. Okay. Nate, you still there?
Can I have clarification on what, what the comment of is what they've been reported to means? Is that what the town is reported to FEMA with individual, particular residents, personal property damage? Or what does that statement mean?
Early, we gave them a list of all the people that had called. And apparently every town was asked for that, that list. And then they had inspectors go and look at these sites and or virtually, I don't honestly know how they got the information, but the, at this point, they haven't declared whether they're going to deem that as part of this storm repair. I will, I will clarify this later. I will get more information for you folks.
Yeah, Nate?
Okay, so the town has sent in information to somebody, state, FEMA, whatever, with a list of individual residents who received personal property damage, who may be looking for assistance. Is that what I believe is true?
Correct. And the points of what roads they were on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck?
When I was down on Pickery Road in the USDA, I asked them about specifically the Moffitt property, which borders the damage on Pine Banks Road that I was looking at. And they do not offer any kind of help for private property owners, just municipalities. That's, that's all I can give you on the USDA. I've not heard anything else.
Okay.
I didn't do that.
Okay. Bob, thank you very much. Any more comments on this issue? Okay, thank you all. Same none, moving on to the USDA grant funding.
So we've kind of been waiting for another grant to kick in and it's obviously not going to. And so Chuck and I looked at, we know we can't get this project done in the timeline that they gave us. They gave us 220 days from the date it was accepted. And that puts the finish date. Sorry.
This is July of 2022?
Thank you. Yep, till July.
July 23rd.
July 23rd, 2022. And so we, in your packet, you have a question of, is there a guarantee for the extension? Because they do grant extensions. And we were pretty positive that it can be achieved, but there's no guarantees. So at this point, we think we should just attempt it, try to get the extension and start, start the process of how much it's actually gonna cost so that we can verify that their proposal of 132,563 is, is in the ballpark. And, and our portion of that would be 33,141. And then as for us, funding our portion, we have a couple of options out there. Chuck has been voicing his concerns about taking it out of his budget so early in the year. We don't know what winter's going to do to us for the rest of it. If it was in, you know, later in the year and he had it, that'd be fine. But we do have the option of possibly using the line of credit to at least cover it while we are transitioning into another year, fiscal year.
Chuck?
I agree, that's my recommendation. That's what I would do. And then if you have it this year, we can revisit my budget and we can revisit our new budget because it's all gonna overlap. And chances are pretty good, you're gonna come up with the money to pay it back, you know?
There also could be grants that we can apply for in the meantime that could possibly be put towards our portion of it. Again, no guarantees, but.
This doesn't include the culvert? The culvert is separate?
Yeah, that's a whole other deal. This is before the culvert. The bank is washed just, just below the strip routes. And so, yeah, that's the story. It needs to be fixed and that was their deal. And they're gonna go further up the road. There's trees and stuff that are blocking past Moffitt's garage. It's causing it to divert the water to erode that bank. So before we visit that culvert, do the bridge, that is paving that road, any of that, this has to be done. So it's kind of a, a mixed up process, but. But that's my only thing. If it was a little later in the year, I'd say, yeah, no problem, we'd figure it out. But I'm just a little nervous right now. I don't know, mud season's gonna break. I don't want to just start rolling money out of culvert funds like that. And as has been said before, if we got that much money in the budget that we can take it out and use it for something like this, then apparently the budgets took too much money in. So before somebody else says it, I'll say it. So.
So what do you mean by it? If the project hasn't been advertised? We're gonna advertise.
You're gonna put it out on the bill.
Right.
So we're gonna fund it before we put it out on the bill.
But it's kind of too negative is that the project hasn't been needed in response to the question of extension, we require good documentation of why they didn't do it. But we are gonna go out.
Well, if you're, if you're just sitting on your laurels, not having your job, they're not gonna give you an extension. If you're, if you're working to get it done, then yeah.
This is, this is countrywide. So in the South, they've, they've got construction season 365. We have winter. That's why we would be in the, in the beneficial part of getting an extension because we couldn't do it now if we wanted to.
But it kind of.
We have to wait until it's.
You don't have. You don't have to get going on, you just got to advertise it. At least it's.
You have to accept it.
You have to put an effort into completing the project.
That's right.
Getting it done, trying to put it out to bid. Can't you say, I want extension?
Right.
And do nothing?
To warrant it. Right. You need to start the process. We need to accept the grant.
You've got to figure out how to pay for it before you throw it out there to bid.
So. Why it's in front of you.
And it's, it's storm related at the end of the day.
Was it before that? Maybe, I don't know, but it definitely showed its face because of that, so.
Where do you need to go?
The okay to fund it one way or another. Uh, we have to accept both the grant for, for their portion.
Where do you want the money to come from?
First. Excuse me?
Where do you want the money to come from?
The 33,000.
I don't even think we need a definite answer right this second. We just need to know from you that yes, we will strive to whatever means. This is too big of a chunk of money to get this project done that's of urgent matter.
We're going to apply for the grant? You need a motion. Did you still got?
We've already applied for it. It's already been, and we have to accept it.
That's all right. We just got to follow the, yes, we are going to come up with 33,142 dollars.
We're going to accept the 99,000 dollars. If we do it their way. The only way we can get to 99 is not to do it the way. It's all.
We devote to spend the 133,000.
Right. But we also got to read the thing to, that we're going to go to bid and we're going to get, go back to the insight. You got to, where are we coming up with it? We're going to come up with 99 for it.
It also, this project could come in at a $250,000, um, price.
Right.
Then you'd say, no, no, we can't.
I guess that's what you're saying. We're going to go out to bid to see what it's going to cost, and then we can come back and see where we're getting the money from.
We can always, once we accept it, we can always still back out and say, no, we can't afford it. It came in at way over price. But we need to start the process now.
Do, do we have availability on the line to do the 33,1? Hypothetically, do the, and not affect other projects?
Yes.
So still.
Yes.
We have a mud season like we have last year, no culverts get washed out.
I meant out of the line.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry.
I didn't know where.
I thought you meant out of our, out of our budget, out of the line, I'm sorry. I misunderstood what you said.
Okay. Any further discussion on this?
So, yeah, no, not on that one.
Well, you need, you need to say, you need a motion, right? I'm still trying to figure out where the motions come from. Is it, is EWP 503-9 Westminster Project Grant Application you want to be approved? Tell me your thought on that.
I would like permission and a grant and a, uh, a motion to continue the process with the USDA grant for Pigree Road area, because it's still not a guarantee that it's going to be 33,141. You can't, you can't earmark that. It could be much less, it could be much more. So all we need is permission from you is that we need to, to proceed, and there could be a possibility of, of a magic fund.
Name of the motion.
USDA grant for Pigree Road.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and give you permission to pursue the USDA grant application for Pigree Road project. I'll second you. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor? I say aye. Close. Motion to grant. Anything else on the USDA grant funding?
At this point.
I've got another grant, but the different one that the asking now.
Got it?
So I, I received the grant for $6,000, the passive grant through BLCT. There is no match. They're going to give us, Highway Department, $6,000 to purchase, um, safety equipment, um, road signs to, to work, reflective vests, that sort of thing, welding gear. They need this personal protective equipment. The problem is, if I take $6,000 out of my budget, because we don't have the money to incur such a thing, that means I have to rob money from somewhere else. That money is going to go back to the general fund. It doesn't come back to my budget. I don't have the money to just take out of my budget and throw it into the general fund for God knows what. So it's not going to benefit the Highway Department any. We're going to suffer somewhere if I do this. So I'm not sure, what do you think I should do?
At least not until the first of July, right? The Highway Department budget is separated out, and then.
This is, this is a right now thing.
Yeah.
So right now, I'm going to take the money out of my budget, right now. And before July, you give that $6,000 back to your budget somewhere. And that means this spring, I wouldn't buy culverts, or I wouldn't buy some gravel, or somewhere, I would suffer.
But it is for the highway. The $6,000 you're going to spend is benefit, you said it doesn't benefit. It will be benefiting you.
Reimbursement, doesn't it? A reimbursement?
No.
But goes back to the general.
I'm going to rob.
We can change that. What I'm going to say is, man, it doesn't do me any good. Yeah, you do. If I give you it.
So where are you going to put it back in my budget?
On your trucking wages, I don't know.
No, 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 no. We're going to get that when we start it. What's wrong with that?
No, that's what we're working on, on this, right?
No, 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 I understand that. That's too little, too late. I'm talking about right now, I'm going to do this right now, or we're going to lose it. But if I do it right now, then this spring, within the mud season, I would have $6,000 behind in my budget somewhere.
Can we fly a solution?
You could, you could do the same thing you're going to do with this other budget. You could take it out of your line of credit. Soon as I get reimbursed from BLCT, pay it off. So that money would never come out of my budget. You'd just be taking it from there, turning right around, putting it right back in a couple months later.
When do you expect to get the money from BLCT?
Usually it's two to three months after I submit the, I've got everything ready to submit, I'm just not sure that, I want to talk to you guys before I go and get it.
Submit and pay for.
Submit and pay for, which, what we would do is we would just, yeah.
There's not a point in your budget, you can take it out for right now, and then put the money back in. I'm just going to find a point.
What he's saying is he can take it out, it just never makes it back in.
Well, right now, I'm saying we're, we're working on that, so. No matter what, if he takes it, that's coming out of the line.
Right, well, you got to rob that, see, something we're going to use right now for.
Right.
Something like that, I can do right now. Okay, there's something more.
If you just turn in a bill for.
The problem is, what Jason just said, it never comes back.
Well, you brought it to our attention, we'll make sure of that.
I think we can pay for it out of a miscellaneous, like the SLIF board's miscellaneous, um, expense line. And then when it gets back into the town, it will go into the general fund to offset that expense. That way the Highway Departments are getting what they need and want, but yet it's not coming out of their budget.
So we would buy?
The $6,000 worth of, of safety.
Let Chuck use it, and we don't need it.
Well, you can use it at any time. You just have to sign up the.
Like, how does it make it back to that line?
You wouldn't have to, because you're, you're going to overspend, um, your miscellaneous line, and it's going to come in, um, as a offsetting revenue. So you don't have to.
We know, and we're not earmarked, we're not that handicapped that we can't go through something like this.
Right.
The problem we've had in the past is just forgotten about it, it's gone, and the next thing you do is write.
We can, we can do this.
We can do it as long as earmarked and notice ahead of time that that's on the door. I don't know.
Because I'd rather keep it out. I've got one to do it with people on the credit, because that's particularly for storm damage. So we can do it another way.
And as he, as he said, if he doesn't do it right now, um, every town is given this opportunity with no match. So you know that they're going to be inundated with, with, uh, projects and money is going to run out. So if he doesn't do it right now, he doesn't submit it right now, then he will lose it. So, um, this is a.
No, because we do want to, we want that as a motion that we.
Absolutely.
All right, I'll make the motion that we go ahead and give the Highway Department spend about $6,000 through equipment that would be eventually reimbursed down the grant. That's a grant.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Thank you. Well. Okay, say none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Done. Anything else on the USDA grant? Okay, thank you all. Moving on to NEMRIC Contract Services Subcommittee update.
In your packet, you have the contracts from NEMRIC, um, the one dated 2015, and the new one dated, uh, September of 2021. Um, and you also have a, um, total expenses that, um, we've endured or going to endure is 20 years, 2021, 2022, and 2023, um, just to, to help with total expenses that we have from NEMRIC.
Did we inform myself, Chris? That, you, that was your question?
Last minute.
Yeah. I just wanted to show this to you.
So where we were, we're having a discussion with the NEMRIC representative or the, um, head of NEMRIC, correct?
That's correct.
And, um, was that going to occur this evening?
That's correct.
Okay.
He's going to be called and, um, to join you in contractual executive session.
Executive session, okay. Yes, June Streeter.
Um, why is it going to be an executive session?
Because dollars will be, be talked about.
What does that mean? I, I, I don't understand why. I think that's a good question.
If we're holding the budget, we already have numbers.
That's, that's correct, but FY '23 is still in negotiation. And so, um, to, to receive the benefit, we would need to go into executive session so that we aren't, um, proposing something that we're, um, going to be putting it out to bid.
But you are going to put it out to bid? You're going, you're not going to sign anything in the executive session? You're going to listen to his proposal and then?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. And then sign, send it out to bid to others?
Well, um, may I? Um, and it's a good question, too, June, thank you for bringing it up. Executive session, um, as representative of the public body, um, we want to make sure because we are discussing a contract, we want some clarification of that. And because it is contractual, it does fall under the rubric of the, of that meeting then. We will come out of that session and make a decision, not necessarily on whether or not we are going to bid for a contract, seek new contractors, but we do need additional information to make an evaluation of that fact. So our decision when we came out would be, could be that, but more than likely not to just make a presumption on everybody here, we're talking. Is that we're going to evaluate the information we're given from the NEMRIC executive, um, and then make a determination as to how to proceed from there. Um, what our subcommittee may do, um, or what our next step would be. But either way, there will be a decision when it comes out of that meeting. Is that clarified for you?
Um, yeah, I'm just a little upset that it's executive session, because I, myself, would like to ask him a few questions, like, for instance, the Springfield, why Springfield's suing NEMRIC? That would be good, that would be something for us to know before we enter into a new contract. I have all sorts of stuff we found online, but. So I wonder, is there going to be some sort of public divulge of information following this executive meeting? So you're going to like, you know, black out the?
Another good question. Um, right now, we are having a subcommittee update. Now, um, as a subcommittee member, I'm certainly willing to listen to anything that you folks want to present here now, or questions that you may have, um, that would help us in the evaluation. That's certainly in the public domain at this point.
I mean, it's.
Is that satisfactory?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's simple. It's typed in in NEMRIC into Google, um, and I would say the first five or six things that come up are not particularly flattering, um, including, um, a settlement of $30,000 going out during the time that we most certainly had a contract with them. So I guess I'm wondering.
Thank you.
A lot of things about why, why maybe it wasn't made public to the town. I mean, clearly it's online, so it's public. Um, but why it was never divulged that they were involved in settlements while we were still signing here in contract with, um, for the same, uh, software that they were being sued for. Um, so I'm wondering, are we involved in that settlement? Did our, any information get leaked? I would assume any town employees would be interested in whether or not their social securities and other tax information might have been in this. That's kind of my question.
Thank you. I've also been given, the board here has been given, um, these all separate.
Yeah. Three separate articles.
One from Business and Economy dated February 5th, 2019, um, article written by Ann Wallace Allen, an outdated software like municipal worker information exposed in 200 towns. You know the substance of this article? I mean, we'll obviously review it. You have a brief synopsis, did you read it?
I read it. Basically, the synopsis was they found gaps. And supposedly, according to the article, they addressed the gaps in software. Supposedly there wasn't any harm, any leaks, any, anything like that. Um, I scanned the one about the fine, um, and I can't quite remember what happened with that.
This is the May 28th, 2019, again, article by Ann Wallace Allen, Business and Economy publication, software company who paid $30,000 in settlement over security flaws. This one?
Yes, sir.
What is the Business and Economy? What is the name of the publication?
The name of the publication is Business and Economy?
It's multiple different levels on it, probably.
Another one from Vermont Independent Voice, um, gentleman by the name of Derek Brower, uh, dated February 5th, 2019, software left the Mont town state vulnerable for years. This also from the board. Um, anything else that, um, you want to add? Folks?
Just clarify, the name of the publication, it's actually, I think, Vermont Digger, it's not.
It is Vermont Digger.
Business and Economy is the name of the section. So the publication is Vermont Digger.
Okay. So corrected. Are there any rebuttals or counterpoints from the public, online or anyone else?
I just, I just have that, um, I would like you to, um, retract a statement you made that you will be making a, a decision after the executive session. You have a lot more information that will be, um, achieved and obtained, um, the subcommittee included, um, after the conversation you have with NEMRIC. So you will not be in any position, you shouldn't be in any position to be, um, gratifying a, a.
No, 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 that's not what I'm, that's not how the process works with respect. Um, this is the rule right here. When we come out of executive session, we have to make for the public, let them know that this is the decision we have made, which is we haven't made the decision on a contract, we haven't made a decision, let's say, to find a new person or start a bidding process. What we have done is we've taken additional information, and we have made a decision, for example. What we have done is we've taken additional information and we have made a decision, for example, to continue with our subcommittee to obtain more information to continue this process. But a decision of some nature of finality that explicitly gives the public some type of information as to what we were discussing in executive session, as June brought up. That with respect is how I read the statute unless someone feels differently. So no, I'm not, I never suggested that we were going to make a decision on a contract or the, or any major decision. Simply that we came out, we would say, you know, we acclimated, for example, information, we received additional information. We spoke to this representative and we're going to continue, for example, with the subcommittee and continue to take information from the public and other sources and continue to speak with NEMRAC if they have more to provide and also consider working on a bidding process. But we do have to come out and make a statement that, of what we're going to proceed with. But in the end, we're not going into the executive session to make a decision. We're just going in. No, no. We would come back out normally. What we'd say is, we discussed this, we have no decision to make and we move on. Correct. I was a little. That's what it says, yeah.
So even if your decision is that you've made no decision, you simply have, you're just saying you have to come out and state, we obtained this information, based on this information, we're making no decision at this time.
Right, you provided, before we headed to executive session, you have provided us, because we have a subcommittee with some additional information we did not have, and thank you for doing so.
It is a little different. I've never done this since I've been here, which is normally you're inviting somebody in, you come back out and obviously say, hey, we have Mr. Jones in here discussing all decisions. Or asking somebody coming by Zoom, by Zoom, right?
That's correct.
I've never done that before. So that's why I was listening to you going, I mean, this is interesting because first, the person is not even here in the building and we're having a discussion about, basically, we're here for information that doesn't make sense. That if you're going to do a budget and you ask somebody, you can't ask them to bid it, you got to ask them for a budget number. And that's kind of what we're doing.
Moreover, the contractor may have substantial information that he or she would like to present and we don't want, under the rule, to present, to put anyone at a substantive disadvantage. That is the whole reason for going into the executive session. I'm just not being slative to the statute. I'm just simply pointing out that you said we have this gentleman. He's going to be here. We're going to talk to him. You know, the public knows what we're going to talk about, but some of that information, that does not have to be discussed by us with the public.
So can we give you questions to ask during executive session and then have you come back out and say, hey, we asked June's question and this was their answer?
Certainly, we are, we are the representative, quote, of the body politic, which is you.
You say the same zing that June was like? All right, we have to write down questions.
But to be fair, I would think this is something different. I would think that we would take the questions, but we won't, we won't have the answer. Number two is that person should be able to themselves come back to another Zoom meeting and turn to the public to answer those questions and not us. That's why I.
That would be less time consuming. So that can be our only question then? And in being a company that wants to provide us with services, you think they would want to be with you people, you select organizers, and the general town?
Yeah, I don't want to relay this necessarily, but I think that to be fair to them, they shouldn't be blindsided. So we go in and say, hey, listen, we need you to come back and just answer these questions.
So I guess that's, that's our only question, is would they be willing to come back and have a public forum?
They just won't be blindsided. So if you've got a question you want us to ask ahead of time so they can be prepared for the answer, it might be nice, so.
Because there's a whole lot of that too. Both of us, correct.
Which tells me they're all questions. Yeah. They're anything.
I don't know where that one came from.
So if NEMRAC does indeed want to come back for a public forum, I think that we're more than happy to email our questions to the subcommittee.
Please, it would be great.
Have, that way, NEMRAC has a little bit of idea of what we're looking at.
Absolutely fantastic. Greatly appreciated.
As long as we can come back with follow-up questions, because sometimes when someone answers your question, that leads you to a follow-up question, which I would like the upcoming team to ask follow-up questions.
Very good. Does that suffice, for at least for this evening?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion with board in this matter? James?
That sounds, I understood that correctly. So they would get questions in advance that they would then address when they came back for that second meeting. But people would have a chance to ask them any question they want at that second meeting, wouldn't they?
Sure.
Okay. They wouldn't be restricted to the previously submitted questions.
Okay.
I think those questions would just be more so like anything where they might need to information gathering or bring documentation versus us just, you know, winging out, okay, you have this number. If you want these exact numbers, I can have it off there.
But if a member of the public learned something new in the interim and wanted to ask that question, they wouldn't be able to.
Yes.
We already know now.
That's true. Again, it's up to the contractor. I don't want to, I think it is, it is a good analogy. It was when we did the landscape contract and those folks came back, but I believe it was a very clear letter that was public, forthright, and said, this is what we're going to do. We're going to do a better job. You know, these are things we thought we did well, but we could do better and we disagree with this, but we agree with that. And we want to continue to be your contractor. And they did that in an open letter, so it's all up to, it's certainly all up to the contractor. And you are the tax base. So thank you. Any further discussion?
Quick follow-up, and maybe this isn't the right time. Please, Mr. Chair. Nate Stoddard. To tag on to the question of the other residents of the town about being available for the after-executive session part of your open meeting? As I said, my motel room near the border of northern Vermont, am I going to be available to attend this meeting after executive session by Zoom?
You're going to have to close this meeting and then reopen.
Yes.
So that's what you're going to declare?
Yes.
Then?
Because I believe with respect, I don't know if Nate agrees, but I believe that's how the, this is supposed to run, under the rule.
So Josh would have to close it down, then come back and start another meeting?
Just going to close down the public and Ernie Saunders will join the meeting?
Right.
They'll have your executive session, folks will leave, and then they'll, if they're wanting to come back, then we'll have to come get them and go back onto the Zoom.
Correct.
You wouldn't have to start another meeting. You could just close up them and then bring.
Put down the calls?
I suppose.
Okay.
Oh, no, I mean, it just, is this a separate meeting?
No. Someone is coming in Zoom to participate.
Okay. Okay.
How will we know when to request to come back in? Thank you. Right.
Yeah.
That, that is exactly my experience with every Zoom meeting I ever attend.
So is this the same length of a meeting or is this two meetings? Yeah. I got you. Got you.
Okay. It does. Thanks for what you're doing. Give it a shot.
Thanks, boss man.
Nate?
Yes, sir. That sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Doc and Roat and Bridgette Stanford. Thank you, everyone.
In the clip document, that in front of you is many documents, but just the top one is what's bringing us for tonight. It is your certification of compliance and town road bridging standards and net inventory. This is the document that's been looked for when we were applying for reimbursement that we were doing incorrectly. So this is a very large, important document, but the other ones that are attached to that are just for net the, they're just bundles that are not ready to be signed yet. So just the top one is that is clipped. Yeah, he has the original.
But you need a motion.
But you need a motion and I.
Make a motion then we go ahead and sign your certificate of compliance for the town road and bridge standards and the net work inventory document. So Lou, do I have a second?
All seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Let me have some discussion, Ken.
Yes, we may.
How, how can I approve this? I don't, I have no idea what name this is or other standards. I wouldn't even know the standards if Chuck didn't do it, would he not?
They're the orange book standards that are, are.
Is there a deadline for when we have to sign this?
You're asking me to approve something that I have never seen before. And I expect you, I mean, I'm sure they have to some degree, but I don't know how we can do that.
Is there a deadline?
Can be tabled until next meeting.
Can be tabled till next meeting?
I can be tabled till next meeting.
In the interim, does every member of the board have the necessary documents? Thank you, Fitzpatrick. The necessary documentation, does this suffice, Chuck?
Thank you for your representation.
Thank you very much for bringing it this evening. All right, so we will, thank you, Jason. So we will bring this, all of us, please, take this under advisement, review it. And then we. Okay, motion is withdrawn, but then we will review in the next meeting to reconsider the certification of compliance for town road and bridge standard and network inventory once the board members have reviewed the standards packet. Does that sound correct? Is that good? Are we all set?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on, meeting and venue discussion.
Before we go any further, can I have that packet back?
Absolutely.
Meeting venue discussion is what you've requested to discuss tonight about your options of what is out there. We were given an email and I forwarded it to you folks about the historic society. I had two conflicting stories and I will get that squared away to which one is true. If it's only going to be for a month or so, it's not going to be beneficial to do all that work of moving the cabinets back for the town hall. Again, we're going to be jumping from venue to venue. We realize that the fire station is giving us a window of opportunity to find a, a spot. But again, we have to find a permanent one. So until the historic society, I was told it was going to be midsummer to or so before they even thought about opening, and now they're talking, it was totally different. So I will get, come back with that, just the straight story. They were going to have a meeting about it and discuss it amongst themselves to come back with a deadline, a date for us to, to know when we could use it, to when they're going to use it and close us back in.
So what you're talking about is the historical society in the second floor town hall making more room?
That's correct. And moving the cases back, as I explained to you.
We need to go from future. It's a compromise to liquidate. You know, we got to maybe go a little money and put the cases on some kind of a way of bill and move back for the reading, because that's really all that's keeping us from doing it, so that.
I've been told that the cases are, days are numbered. They're not going to be there much longer. There's a couple on bricks that are not, they're not safe any longer. But again, this is where the board has to make decisions of what is going to stay, what is going to go. And like you said, is it possible to put them on some sort of a roller system where we can slide them off to the side and then bring them back?
You, we're what we're responsible for. It just seems like you put all that money into that town hall. We put heat up there, we've done all that, and then if we don't go up, we have meetings not even used for months.
Power.
And it works, it sounds good, everything is there. It's, we've come this close and all of us. The fact that we're being squeezed into a little section in there and all we're asking for is just for those meetings to have more rooms and everybody to be in six feet apart, or better than that there.
Is the dream of the historical society still to have a building of their own in town? Is that the thought?
It's been, it's been voiced that yes.
Is it possible to, I mean, I know they don't want to be in Northwest Muster forever. I get it. But until they were able to work something out, would it be possible to? Temporary.
Fletcher told us last meeting, no.
Well, because we're talking permanent, forever. And I'm not talking, I'm talking.
But they're.
We even offered them. We even offered them to electric store some of their stuff there that they didn't have a home for. They didn't want to do. We, I think we need to pursue it. I mean, we're just, we just, we just put more money into the.
I mean, it's ready to push.
Stairway. We put all that money into that place and I can't believe we can't use it. All we're asking for is a little more room.
I didn't think of moving the cases though.
I don't want to.
It seems like if we buy the hauls, right?
Yeah, put them on.
Probably make those cases movable, actually. Kind of need to get in one, so you just put some wheel on them.
That's what I keep saying. Why can't they put them on some kind of a, we have to go buy them. Put them, put them on, it's only, they very carefully move them out, we have the meeting, we just move them back. It's not like they're in there every day to.
Or we just move them back on day of meeting. Not in there.
No, that's.
Every day.
And we could have a planning commission meeting up there. It's good sound, it's got heat, it's got everything that we need. It's in our town hall. We've spent all that money, bought the post office, the park, we've done everything. And the only thing that keeps us from using it is some cases that we don't have room enough to be in. It's not a bad place where we squeezed everybody into one little corner, got an elevator, we've done all that. I just think that we should pursue it as a select one, a little higher than what we're doing.
Any other discussion?
Or if we petition that room off so it's secure?
I don't think, I don't think we have to. I don't think we got to.
I'm saying that was one of the things at one point they were talking about was they couldn't bring it on display or do anything because it was an unsecure area because we're having meetings there. Everybody would be having meetings there.
I think Wes Delton has a discussion. Let's see where we go.
Jim, Matt, Jack?
Yeah, related, thank you. I, not related to the historical society space and the town office, but about meeting space generally, there's been a lot of talking about institute. I just wanted to, um, have institute boards let everyone know what we have and have not made any decisions on, and it's mostly not. And how we see things going forward if they do it and it went well. So number one thing was we've made no decisions on anything, as a board. The initially, the proposal to the ARPA committee that I put forward was to use some ARPA money to do, to hire someone and I got preliminary back in the envelope, the public says, uh, estimates from an architect uh, to have someone of that nature would oversee it and do an independent qualified assessment, analysis of what would be needed to make that a safe, efficient meeting space under COVID type conditions. And we found out when we had the first ARPA committee meeting in the gym, the acoustics couldn't be worked. If you wanted to design totally unusable acoustics, that's what you'd do historically. So that would work. That would actually be dealt with. Then of course there's the ventilation system and whatever would be needed. And you'd want good audio visual, whatever. That would have to be assessed by somebody. If something came up, was proposed that everyone wanted, the town would have to decide what it wanted to spend money on or not. The institute would have to decide what it was okay with making changes to the building. If that worked out, if something were done, then everyone said, yeah, let's, let's go with that plan. Then it seems to me you would need a pretty detailed agreement that would spell out who owns what, who uses what. If the town's going to sink a lot of money in there, how far going forward, are they guaranteed to be able to have the meetings in there and what's the schedule? You can't do that and then say, sorry, we're having a, you know, we're having a children's society party, so you can't have flip with me. So that would have to be worked out. So there were lots of assurances there. It probably wouldn't be as hard as I'm making it sound, but but that, so there hasn't been any kind of an assessment as to what would be needed. So you aren't even ready to even start thinking about what that would be and what those assurances would be. We currently have no information based on that. So all I'm saying is that the institute board wanted, wanted to be clear to everyone that we're not making any assumptions. We're open to it. Which is the same thing we said to the historical society when the issue came up about a building. We're not sure it's a good idea. We're not saying it's a bad idea. Tell us what you want to do and we'll all figure something out or not. I just wouldn't want anyone to think that we were going ahead with some grand plan to do something because the reason we suggested a study in the first place is that we don't know what would be needed. We really don't. We do know that preserving the historic nature of the building is paramount. We're, that's, we're, doesn't mean you can't put barns up in it, but it's got to be done perfectly. And in fact, on to digress, but that's the issue we're having with the elevator board. They insisted the right thing to do is to rip out that shaft and build a whole elevator, a whole thing, ground up. And the architect has estimated that they're adding $100,000 to an already expensive project. And we're saying, hey, it doesn't make sense to be a moment useless yet. So same thing, the historic nature of the building is an important piece to us. So unless, you know, questions about where we are or what we're thinking, I just wanted to be sure that everyone knew what that was. Thank you very much. If I wasn't clear, please, you know, finish with questions every time. You know, you know how to find us.
Any questions for Jim while he's here? Anyone online?
Just made the point of making sure the rest comes back and move more of another.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And
And don't permit to think that the ARPA committee knows what this is going to be either. There's more, more loose ends and confusion than that than Chuck is thinking.
And thank you for everything you do for us and for the building and for the town. You, Jim is a they scare that building and spends campus hours trying to make that facility better. And thank you for all you're doing and thank you for coming and
That's okay. Those undeserved compliments, but I appreciate it. So every time I tell people my old job, you get an undeserved compliment, just say thank you because you're going to get a lot of undeserved blame.
Thanks. Thank you, Jim. Very much. Okay. So any more discussion on meeting venue change? Thanks, Jim. Okay. Okay. Moving on to executive session.
Any questions?
Yep. Big motion that we go into the executive session and forward, go to this best contractual conversation and we will Ken? Second. Motion has been made and seconded to conduct an executive session by the public body and include a contractual matter and include representatives from NEMRI in that discussion and the town manager.
Do that at the end.
Yes, we will do that at the end.
Don't go anywhere.
Don't go anywhere. We will do that at the end. All those in favor? Aye, both. Okay. Thank you very much. Managers report.
In your packet, you have the Wyndham County Sheriff's credit that's requested in writing. On one side you have a, my handwriting, you're not paying and on the other side is the actual credit I received by County Sheriff.
The actual question was a looking check. So we actually cut a check to them for that amount and they send it back? What would they do?
We held this billing and then they sent me this credit for that money.
They just signed for that check. So how did that work?
That's for March. This is for February. We pay in advance one month. That is for March. This is for February. We did not pay February's bill.
Oh, okay.
I held the bill and, and talked to him about it. You folks asked for it in writing. So we had to wait a while and we got it.
So by just coincidence, it happens to be this?
It just happens to be.
Okay.
For paying for March.
Right. That makes me feel better because I know we've got a check in here for what's going on.
Town hall entrance was going to start today, but it will definitely be tomorrow. We also bought the ballot box installed that has to be under lock and key by state law now in the front entrance. February 21st is President's Day and the town offices will be closed. That's just FYI. The next ARPA meeting is February 22nd at 5:30 at the Institute. And voting will be at the town hall on March 1st at 10 a.m. to 7 p.m.
Okay. Down to the boards of commissioners.
In your packet, you have a request to, for a person to join the Westminster Conservation Commission, Sarah Waldorf. Can we get a motion?
Can we move that we appoint Sarah Waldorf to the conservation?
Uh, motion to appoint Sarah Waldorf to the conservation commission has been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Yes, you may have a discussion.
How many of you people are on the floor? I mean, is there, do we ever come up with a mountain of people? Are we just adding into it? Is there terms?
There is no terms and there's no limit. It's a conservation commission. They do multiple things.
I'm not a guest. I didn't know if there would only
But some, some people do fall off.
A lot of times when we set those up, we say it's going to be a seven. I never remember not setting a committee of seven, nine, five members so that
This one has had seven and I think they're down to like four or five right now. Again, you'll have the appointment list here shortly as it progresses.
Any other discussion?
Is this been seconded?
It has.
By Toby Hall?
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Aye, both. Okay, Sarah Waldorf is now on the conservation commission.
Thank you.
Other business, I also just wanted to real quick, thank Chief Streeter, all the men and women of the fire department for also putting up with us and providing us this venue. It's excellent venue and as we get things straightened out and always being there for us when we need them and everything else that he does. And thank you that we'll promise to clean up the best we can and be out of your hair as soon as we can. But thank you very, very much too for all you've done for us throughout this process. Thank you. Any other business?
Yeah, this time.
Well, I think any other business, I just want to kind of get the discussion started. We have some, it's mainly the rescue to craft an ambulance service. We have some routine calls that we go on. There's one resident in town. We've been there 32 times in the last year. Yeah. So I'd like to get it out there. It's definitely discussion. We've contacted Westminster Cares, different agencies, but we've got to do something. The problem won't go away. The people will just stop coming. They just, you know, when you go there at night o'clock at night, you go there midnight, you go there 2:30, people are just not going to make it up. They're not going to go. So and I, it is not just Westminster. You hear it. If you listen to scary, you hear it all over the place. That might be a little extreme, but that's a little of a number.
Not necessarily. Where do you see, where they
Not even, I mean
My environment, the track.
Yeah. So and I think it's above us. I think it's going to be
It's mental health.
Yeah, it is a lot. It probably is mental health, but I think maybe our representatives got to be aware of this and do something and start the discussion, you know. And like I say, it's not just Westminster. You hear it all over the place, but they can go do something.
Thank you, chief. Is, any ideas on how we can begin to plot a solution others?
Does Westminster Cares offer intervention type services?
Not at all.
Okay. Well, is this a mental health situation or an elderly situation?
It could be a combination.
Or their husband.
So I mean, even if it's not necessarily a mental health situation and if it's elderly, Westminster Cares or HCRS, I think one of the two corporations, HCRS definitely has an emergency networking system. So
Senior solution.
We're going to have a senior
With this situation, senior solutions have been contacted. Like I say, Westminster Cares, we've talked with them several times, other outfits, our place.
They also don't dispatch in the middle of the night and to the town hall. HCRS, none of those places dispatch in the middle of the night.
What about visiting nurses?
Visiting nurses would wait a lot for two, three hours until they like
I was going to say, I think this is beyond, I just think of it as a night dispatch issue.
But and just, and it may be as simple, not maybe to us, but checking on these people and, and as the population ages, it is just going to happen more, obviously. But, you know, visiting nurses might give them
Is this person by themselves?
Yes, I guess you could say that. And this isn't the only one. We've got one that we've been to 10 or 11 times in the last year, which doesn't seem like a lot, but to go to one house that many times.
It's sort of the time of the night, right? You have one.
So, yeah.
We breathe there at that place.
And, and like I say, we've had it in the past and dealt with it, you know, we contact people, but yeah. If we're on the fire side, we call the state, they come down and they take care of the situation or we will, but, you know, the medical side, it's, it's a tough situation.
You can't force transport, right? You can't force them to go.
And this, this situation, they are transported at times and they only back home before the ambulance gets back in the garage. So it's, yeah. And like I say, it's not just Westminster. It's state level and probably your own country.
Probably not.
But I think your idea that the community and, you know, having a, maybe a, some type of program that checks on people or maybe more funding towards Westminster Cares so that they can provide some sort of assistance.
But everything, because I've been dealing with it now, goes to senior solution and they break it into the visiting nurses or the HCR. They, they kind of coordinate, but then they actually give you to a group that actually tries to go get you the money to pay for it. And once they get the money coming in from Medicare, then they just search on who does what, but it sounds like these people need some
We hate visiting nurses, don't we?
We donate money to them. That's different, yeah. We donate money to all those groups to help them out, but in order to get somebody there full time with their sign up for assistance and there's 24 hour care or whatever it is, you got to go through one of those agencies that goes out and helps you.
Well, I know that BCIM and Upper Valley Services offers crisis intervention programs where you literally, you can't call them any hour of the night. My father runs a crisis intervention program. You can call him any hour of the night and he is on call. He's showing up or he's on a phone call with, you know, Nicole and all them trying to figure out. So I mean, I would think that some sort of crisis intervention program has to be available for the town to reach out to so that, you know, Cole's, maybe he's calling up BCIM being like, hey, I've got the same caller. It's there. You have somebody on call. If it's not, if we don't need to deploy the fire engine and we don't need to send a rescue truck and the entire crew doesn't need to get out of bed and Cole knows it's the same caller, you know what I mean? It almost makes more sense for him to send it to a crisis intervention network that might interfere in a similar way, I guess.
How do you get all those types of resources?
Uh, you call them.
I get, I get them jumping with every type of smells, calls and harasses me because we don't fly on this driveway.
Yeah, you call them.
And he won't, he don't understand that we don't fly driveways.
Yeah.
He's 98 years old. I have stolen my driveway. It's your responsibility. I didn't pay.
I mean, yeah, like if I had an elderly neighbor that was struggling and was not, or had mental health issues that weren't being addressed, I could call up a local company that serves this area and tell them, hey, my neighbor so and so is really struggling, showing really obvious, you know, hygiene issues, they're not eating. And they can show up and kind of offer them some sort of assistance in that process. So I mean, the companies exist whether or not we have the resources to get in touch with them. They do exist.
Oh, I'm sure they do. That's the same right there. You got to talk to a great person to make things happen.
Yeah, well, so just to get the conversation started.
There might be a discussion now with Westminster Cares. I mean, they wouldn't go out and do it, but
They could at least need to have somebody contact and make it, try to figure out what
Yeah. Start it.
Someone, I can reach out to Donna and maybe we can start this process. Once they notify who they are and where they're and all that, like I, I just went through and got a lot of help. Once they knew that paid that, oh yeah, we know that home, we checked it out and but until somebody actually goes to a home that's authorized from the state to say, okay, you know, we got a problem here. Yeah, they don't, they don't take phone calls.
No, I mean, but it's so different. They call the DCF really. If you call DCF, the child's in need, they're going to send a DCF worker to that house. You call APS and you're like, hey, this adult is really in need. Like they might not be a nine one one emergency, but they're not eating, they're not bathing, they're not paying their bills. Like they need help. So over something to point that a lot of these people don't have family.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll, we'll reach out to Donna. We'll start there and see if we can, thanks, chief, and thank you very much.
Westminster Cares is a very good
Yeah.
group, kind of, I'm very proud of them to, to mention themselves.
Yeah.
And hopefully we can plot a solution. Okay. All right, thank you. Anything else? Anything?
Nothing else.
Okay, so we will then move to executive session.
I make a motion to, uh, to put other avenues for financial services for the town.
I'll second. A motion made to continue with the subcommittee to look for additional options and due diligence on financial services for the town has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Okay, motion is adopted. So Susan?
Yeah, that was my one minute.
Craig, thank you. It's, you jumped out. It wasn't one of those things you have to do. Is any other business drop forward? You didn't say that. Didn't you say it? That's right. Any other business? Any other comments for the public?
They didn't know.
Peter, thank you. It's February 23rd, 2022. Here at the firehouse. Meeting adjourned.
Second?
I'll second. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.